Okay, good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to amenities. We start with our usual declarations of disclosable pecuniary interests, eight four eight. Does anyone have anything they wish to declare at this stage? None, thank you very much. Apologies for absence.
From councillors Hodgson and Parker.
Thank you, anyone aware of any others? No. Minutes from our March meeting, held on the third of March, received by council on the 29th of March. Are you all happy that I sign those minutes as a true record? Yep, lovely, thank you very much. Action points and updates, I'm gonna do my usual thing and take that one at the end, just to see if we need to add anything to that or take anything off as we go through the meeting. So the first proper item is health and safety. To receive verbal feedback on any matters requiring the attention of the committee. Nothing from yourself, Chris? Lovely, thank you. Anything, Alan, you wanted to add on that one?
I think so.
Okay. There's a couple of bits to do with health and safety that will pick up under the next item, I think. So we'll move on to town team and countryside officers' report, which has been circulated. Unfortunately, neither Nick or Stephen are able to be with us today. So it's really a case of going through their report and picking up any comments or observations that we want to do. The first is the good news in relation to litter bins that we discussed at full council. Nick's been liaising with Breckland on the locations, and I think we've had a bit of a discussion at amenities about what we think are the best locations for the larger bins. So you can see on the list there, Nuns Bridges car park, there's going to be two new ones. Spring Walks, two ones. Button Island off Bridges Walk from Spring Walk, one, and the entrance to, from the bridge onto Button Island, on the sort of Aldangos side, there'll be one. So we're actually getting one more bin than we anticipated, because I thought we'd get five for the money that was available. But we're actually getting six, which is really good news. Is the committee generally happy, Barbara?
You know the round, the grounds by Melford Bridge, that right back onto the roundabout?
Yeah.
There's a metal picnic bench there. I presume that those bins belong to Breckland, because they're in a deplorable state. They've got an old burnt out one, and they've just got an open metal one.
And I know what you mean, there's a picnic table there, isn't there? And there's often people sat there. And that little bit of land is not actually within Fethford Town Council. It's Kilverstone, Bretonnham, isn't it there? So I think they put that bin in and the bench, which is why it isn't like our normal street furniture. But that is an interesting point, because I have noticed that bin is a bit of a state.
I mean, it's got burnt out, and normally Gunners put another open bin, and it's just metal. There's no base, there's nothing. So Breckland being a bit too.
We'll make a note of that, because it might be something that we mentioned to Kilverstone, Bretonnham Parish Council, just to see if they're aware and if they've got any plans to replace it, but.
Because obviously, if anyone visits it, it gets classed as Fethford. And when you've got all the other nice bins, and that's the first bin you see, you know, not people just stop off there to, you know, to exercise the dogs when they're going on this side of town.
Yeah.
Could you just repeat that, please, Barbara?
I'm not sure what the plan is, it's by Melford Bridge.
By Melford Bridge.
Okay, but generally happy with the location of the new bins. What we, Nick and I had a quick chat last week, and we said, obviously, the bins that are going to be taken out, in most cases, there's nothing wrong with them. So we're really hoping that we can get them sort of cleaned down and fixed up and, you know, put back somewhere else in Fethford. What we didn't want was for Breckland to take them away, and not suggesting they will, but to actually keep them local, basically, so.
So would if we put them in somewhere else, have we then got a painful exercise with Breckland to say whether they'll empty them or not? It's not easy.
Generally speaking, replacing a like bin in an adopted area for emptying is far easier. And we do have quite a lot of bins that are in a bad state of repair, where the doors don't shut, or they're sort of corroded or whatever. So I suspect that they'll be used for that, rather than new locations. That said, there is a process to request a new location. So if, you know, if people are aware of somewhere where there's a lot of litter and there are no bins, it's always good to make that point, but I suspect it will be replacement. Okay. Nick's included some pictures in his report, he's been busily cleaning street furniture, which is great. And you can see the difference it makes there. What's that, Pine Close Shops, Barnham Common, those sort of areas. I say Nick, it's not just Nick, it's a number of people that do the work, which is much appreciated. And I haven't seen it, but he's told me that the bin along Spring Walk that was lifted up actually is part of the flooding. You can see the base was lifted out of the ground. That's now been re-leveled and cleaned, which is an important walkway into town there, so that's encouraging.
So just on your, with your Breckland hat, I don't know, but we had the seek stand last Friday. And by the statue, Mike and I noticed that a couple of pavers had come away from there. No, it's not our remit, we call you to, Mike, as a Breckland councillor, maybe, yeah. What do we do, do we have a liaison with town and Breckland? Does Nick get involved with that, by Steve Hitchman, and that is a regular meeting that those things can be raised?
I'm not sure if it's regular in terms of sort of frequency, but I know that Nick has lots of conversations with Steve Hitchman about, you know, who owns what, who's responsible for what. So, you know, if there's anything specific like that, Nick can raise it with them. Okay, floor displays. Anyone that's been through the town centre last week or so, you'd have noticed that the team have been replacing the planters that we're responsible for, particularly around the Carnegie and the market square. Let's put some before and after pictures there. What I've reminded Nick last week was the conversation we had before about using the town council's social media to, when they do stuff like this, put before and after pictures online, because the amount of people that I find that think the planters are Breckland or Norfolk or the street furniture's Breckland. And actually, you know, I'm quite pleased with the amount of work we've been doing on street furniture and floor displays, and we should be, you know, highlighting the work the town council's doing. So hopefully you'll see some posts about that online, for those of you on Facebook. Moving on to the March Spring Clean event, Nick and Carl particularly, and Stephen and the conservation volunteers helped with that, and you can see some photos again of the before and after. He's also been working on the finger post signs and the hanging basket columns. The finger post signs are actually Norfolk County councils, but Nick's been having some conversations about getting the signs updated or additional new signage put in.
Are we clear that that is definitely, I know the Norfolk County council pays for them, but when Susan's here, the conversations that were had was that the legacy would be Fethford's. But are they now saying they're going to pick up some of the cost of it, Norfolk?
My understanding is that they are, I'm just reading the report there, Norfolk are looking into whether or not they will actually contribute to the cost.
I'm quite happy to take it.
Maybe they've forgotten the legacy, but.
Street furniture was always going to be.
I mean, they may well come back and say, actually, we've looked into it and it's town council responsibility, but at the moment, they are looking to. Yeah, well, the thing is with the, certainly the hanging basket poles, there's a lot of them. And there's some I noticed up by the Thomas Pegg Hotel, you know, they're filthy. So they do need to be looked after and remated.
But, you know, one of the things, if we're having a conversation with repainting, I know further on, is asking for the street furniture to be painted. The conservation area protocol is this painted black, but a number of times where they've replaced length standards, they've put them in with a new zinc coated thing, or they've replaced the head with a new bit, but not actually painted that black. So it's great that they are engaging on this, and we'll follow up with Nick and his contact, whoever that may be. It's not Jack, because it's anything electrical, he doesn't want touch. It's good that, you know, they are coming on board, because previously, they just said, oh, well, that's not our, anything open about the million years time.
If we keep our fingers crossed, by the time Nick comes back next month, hopefully we'll have some clarity on that. And I doubt they'll upgrade them in terms of new signage, but in turn, you know, they're mostly given a wash down. They've got all the tools to do it, so. Moving on to Castle Park, do you want to mention this one, Stuart? Because I think you've been liaising with Nick on that one.
Oh, just on the, that was a member of the public that put us on guard that it was flooding there. Basically, nowhere with the water to go to. Nick's cut away there, and hopefully the water will go, probably might have to have a drain at some point, a French drain, to drain away the surplus water and go down into the, I said moat area, there never was a moat, but it was, which would be the natural place for it to go to. But that's obviously nice and clean at the moment, we're just keeping an eye on it.
Yeah, it looks a lot better. Okay, and did you want to say anything about the Thomas Pegg statue one, or you're sort of happy with what's there? Is Nick asking for sort of guidance as to which quote we want to accept?
I think he's just giving us indication of what the prices are. They were within the spending power of the time clock, so it shouldn't be a problem.
Brilliant.
There is budget spent.
Okay.
There is, excuse me. There isn't much to say.
No, no, there is a little bit of, there was some money left over.
But not to that extent.
I mean, there was, I think we spent three thousand out of a possible five thousand.
Two and a half left.
Oh, is it fifty? Okay, sorry, yes.
The idea was we use this as a basis for awards for all bid. Obviously, what we're up there is sufficient to go for that bid now, I'm happy to write that. I'm very conscious that prices will be subject to change in quite a short time. I noticed that they've put a time scale on his quote there. So I think we need to stay bigger, building contingency, but the awards award only goes to ten. So even if we've got the ten plus the three, we're still, you know, a bit short. I'll write it anyway, because it's ten's worth.
And there's one there for eleven, eleven K plus VAT. Have you been through these quotes and you're sort of quite happy that they all cover what we need?
Yeah, yeah, I've read what they're doing, and I think we work on the basis of the most expensive one, plus a contingency, then we should be all covered.
Yeah. Brilliant. If you do that and submit that bid, you have to sort of circulate a copy to the committee and then we'll.
Yeah, we'll circulate before we send it.
Brilliant. I know awards will normally do a turnaround in about eight weeks, don't they? So that's not too bad. Good. I know we had a job getting free quotes, I'm pleased to have managed to get free, and that means we can take it forward. It was two and a half that we've got, so you can factor that in, Stuart. Okay, moving on. Next bit on Nick's report, flower beds. And I know that Nick was speaking to a few companies, but I don't think at the moment we've got any specific quotes, have we?
He's been battling to get the quotes.
Yeah. Okay, I'm not sure there's anything else we can say on that at this point. Okay, and public toilets. The contractor has shown further improvements in the cleanliness of the toilets, and further staff have now been recruited. A further deep clean has taken place to the toilets at Cage Lane and Castle Park. The automatic sink dispensing units are now all repaired and working following the recent servicing and repair works needed. Again, we've got some photos there. Anything else on toilets, or generally quite happy?
I think they've been scheduling deep cleans quite regularly now, so I think they did one yesterday. It would have been the last one they did do last night, they would have done one.
I know it's a small and rather nitpicking point, but the Cage Lane toilets in particular have a, the WC's have a roller system for paper, which frequently either fails or is empty. It fails because it doesn't unroll, so you have to sort of grapple inside like that to try and get a piece of paper to come out, to get the end out to it, and then run it down. And, I mean, this morning, for example, I'm working, I'm not working. So ignorant members of the public could go in and sit down and find there's no, effectively, there's no paper. So it's not a perfect system. I think we, at the very least, should be using that system again next time we put new ones.
Yeah, because that's not the system at the Castle Park toilets. So it's interesting then to sort of vary. I can see Alan scribbling away, Mike, so he will let Nick know. He's probably already aware of it, but we'll see what we can do.
That seems to be a design failure on those dispensers. I mean, they're exactly the same.
Yeah, and they're supposed to be, it is used paper economising and stuff, but they fail so often. You don't need to get really angry with it, pull those out. Okay. Playparks. Couple of bits to say on this one. So the first phase of the repairs that were carried out under health and safety are nearing completion. The various play areas are now in need of further maintenance repairs, following the initial health and safety repairs that have already been carried out. There's quite a lot of information on there, and I was having a chat with Alan before. The way I look at it is, we have done all of the really important health and safety repairs that were needed. There's a couple of bits outstanding. The next lot of repairs are about us being a bit more proactive and actually dealing with some of the sort of safety matting issues and that sort of thing. I wonder if we could, if members were happy to set up a working group so that we could look into these in a bit more detail with Nick. We've got a budget available, which is more than the total cost at the moment that's on there. But I think we need to explore what else we could be doing to upgrade the play areas in a sort of proactive manner, rather than, we always seem to have these urgent health and safety repairs. Would I like us to be a bit more proactive and deal with things a bit, you know, a bit earlier? Does that make sense? Because it's not on gender item today, we can't make a decision. But we can set up the working group. Does anyone particularly want to be involved in that? What do you mind? I'm happy to do that as well. Yeah, anyone else? No, cool. So we'll have a chat with Nick and go through them, and if anyone's got any sort of observations about play areas from their own areas, you know, let us know.
I think possibly we can, because he does try and do it, I mean, playing areas.
Yeah, that's a good idea. I was thinking it might be a good opportunity to address some of the street furniture issues around play areas, because they tend to be the most well-used, you know, benches and that sort of thing. So we'll, you know, do a bit of a sort of thorough job, basically, Stuart.
I think I've mentioned to Nick before, about when we're looking to replace things, go for a higher spec, things that will last a bit longer, rather than whatever the cheapest or light flight replacement is.
My mum, I walk that way every day, and Castle Park is heavily used. I think in all time, walked that way. I don't think there's been one day where there hasn't been somebody on it for it.
Sorry, Paula.
Well, that's fine, I was just gonna say, I can't commit full time, depending on the schedule, and when Chris goes out to check the parks, it's looking, but I can sort of support him on ad hoc, on occasions, when I have a little bit of spare time, so I can support him on occasions whenever I can.
Yeah, that's fine. Well, there's obviously a couple of members not here today, and I think Dave would probably like to be involved. So if we let everybody know when it is, and then if you are free, pop along. I think we'll be largely led by Nick and Carl's availability, but I would quite like to go through that list with them, and just to see if there's anything they haven't put on the list that actually we need to be thinking about. Okay, so that's town team. The only other thing I was going to mention was on street furniture and benches in particular. We have a sort of a memorial bench policy as a town council. It's very out of date. I think it was last reviewed in 2014, and the costs built into it are obviously, you know, quite a bit out of date now. And Tina and the team are going to be looking at the policy and probably put it on the agenda for next month. One of the things I mentioned to Tina yesterday was, the big problem with the memorial bench policy is it's solely about installing new benches. And we do have quite a lot of benches already in the, in the town, particularly along the River Corridor and a few places. And so I quite like the idea of encouraging people to essentially adopt a bench in memory of somebody. And so rather than, I think it's five, six hundred quid to put in a new memorial bench, whereas the vast majority of our benches are not actually memorial benches, they're just benches. So I said I'd mention it today to see if the committee were happy about sort of pushing the idea of encouraging people to adopt a bench, basically paying for them to be improved. And, you know, as part of that, they'd have a little plaque on in memory. It came about, because I had a lady contact me and said that her mum had died recently, and she wanted to put a memorial bench along the river, because she liked to walk along the river. And that particular location, there were already quite a lot of benches. And I said, I don't think the council will want to take on too many benches in one place. But the benches that are there easily could be adopted by this family in memorial to, you know, to their mum. So I thought to sort of float that and see if folks are sort of quite happy with that suggestion. Yeah.
I quite agree. I think it looks a little bit of a legacy for whoever wants to sponsor the bench, and sometimes it gives us funds to keep them neat.
Yeah. Because I think that ties in with our audit of street furniture, because I couldn't tell you where the benches are mapped across the town. But if we had a map showing where all the benches are, people could then choose which one actually was most appropriate, and then we could have a log of, you know, which ones are in memorial to whoever. Okay? And that way we have a bit more control over the standard design, because we do have a standard design now for benches. There's a couple of the older memorial benches that are really quite a horrible design. There's one down Spring Walk near the Exservice Club, which is a horrible plasticky bench, whereas we tend to go with the sort of metal ones now. Okay, any other points on town team? Nope. Good. Moving on to countryside officers' report. So first thing to note is the tree planting maintenance across a number of different sites. And you can see some photos there of them hard at work. And interesting to see the statistics there for the different areas. And again, some photos from the spring clean. They've clearly been particularly busy in March, because the hours completed was 120, which is somewhat more than what I usually do, I think, so that's good. Grazing, sheep are grazing both sides of the common, and Stephen was due to meet the grazier sometime this week to discuss potentially grazing of Castle Park. And you can see a note there about the wooden pollards, which Stephen and Nick replaced along Norfolk Road, which was good. Tree Safety Works, Norfolk Trees, who we use for those, have begun, and Stephen's going to liaise with Ashleigh to make sure that they're all completed. And then lastly, on the fish pass. After the meeting we had with ES scheduled for the 7th of March to explore next steps, ES, which I think is Ellis, has contacted the PSO team for the region, no idea what PSO team is, regarding the FRAP requirements.
It's partnership strategic overview team, which we've mentioned earlier.
Okay. What's FRAP then? Fisheries policy. So as condition 2.3.4 of the FRAP states, the temporary fix should be in place for no more than two years. This is the temporary fish pass. And I would be grateful if you could advise Fethford Town Council on the FRAP requirements. Ellis said on the 15th of March, work with risk management authorities to design, develop, fund and deliver projects to reduce flood risk to communities. We are waiting to hear feedback. In the meantime, Fethford Town Council, along with the EA, will continue to monitor the temporary construction.
Following the comment made by Tina yesterday, is the construction still in place? And if so, if not, rather than just blindly put it back, we probably need to have something a bit more in the medium term, rather than the short term fix. And we did advocate the use of gabions, the white baskets, which would stop the people going in there and just chucking stones away, who can still deliver the same, you know, profile of that using those. So is that something we can feed back to, is this going to be Stephen? And Stephen has that conversation with them, whether we can use gabions, because otherwise we're going to spend a lot of time making repairs to something, if you can get something a bit more, you know, medium term, we can still end up with the same result, but.
Yeah. It's definitely worth, I mean, I'm always a big believer in sort of forward planning, and if we can at least explore it, make sure it's possible and get some quotes from it. The, the structure that they're at the moment is actually, you know, in remarkably good condition. The previous temporary structure didn't last long at all, whereas this one that's there now is in a much better condition after quite a period of time. But it makes sense to sort of be planning a sort of interim solution, I suppose. And so if we can make a note for Stephen to explore that. I'm slightly confused, because we were hoping the EA were going to provide the large share of the match funding. If I'm understanding it correctly, essentially what they're saying is they're now not going to provide the match funding, but they're pointing out to us that it's, you know, it's going to need a, the temporary solution is only there for two years, and therefore we need a longer term solution, but they're not going to pay for any of it. Is that essentially, if I understood that correctly?
They haven't budgeted for next year, come into the budget review for 23, 24.
Okay.
It's going to be funded, but Ellis is apparently looking at other opportunities, and this is, I don't understand all these academics either, but he has been going to, Ellis has been looking at other possible funding streams that could be used for it.
Okay.
That's all I'm aware of, so.
Okay, which is more optimistic than I would have thought, so I'm quite pleased about that. The thing that we need to be aware of, therefore, is what happens if the temporary structure that's there at the moment fails before this longer term solution comes about? So I think Stuart's point is quite valid, that we need a, we need a Plan B. And the other point is about regular, regular monitoring, and I do think it's important that our staff have a schedule in place to regularly go down there and to check on its integrity and to check to make sure it's not blocked up. Several times I've gone past, and there's all been logs and stuff in there blocking it up. So if we can, you know, put that as part of their routine to be monitoring it, I think, you know, we need to take responsibility. Okay, anything else on fishing paths?
Just to say that I think the problem runs both ways. There is an issue with losing the fish pass. It essentially either gets worn away or it's either removed deliberately by a person or persons unknown. But there's also an issue with one or two people who would be very happy to see the fish pass disappear, so there's a complete break, a complete, and no water can get through, or very little water can get through. I think we all know who the likely suspects are, but, but we just need to make sure the staff are aware of both sides of the issue. There can be too much there and there can't be too little there.
Yeah. Okay. Interestingly as well, I don't, I mean, I know several of you walk along that way. Further along the river towards Arlington Way, there's been some sort of wooden posts put in and some sticks to sort of build up the bank. And going back to your previous point, Stuart, about how much of the bank there has been lost. Um, and I, going back to your previous point Stuart about how much of the bank there has been lost. Uh, I did wonder if that is something that should be done at that point as well. Uh, further along, I think land is probably BTO land, and I think they've done that work. Um, uh, and it's a sort of, you know, natural sort of, um, forcing the natural process of sort of sediment and stuff to build up. Um, so it's worth having a conversation about whether we should be doing that, that section as well.
And that's not related, if I may indulge you, that, uh, okay, Mike and I were at Denbuck, Nigent, and there is a problem in this Breckland land that uh, they've taken away the shrub. It's nearly up to the path now. If something's not done there, we'll lose the path. And, you know, that type of process could be done there, but it's been a, you know, sort of natural way of backfilling.
Yeah. They tried to um, get MTI money to pay for that to be fixed. And we said it's a repair issue, not an upgrade. Anything else on countryside report? No, quite happy. Thank you for that. Financial report update, lead finance officer. Good, I've been talking too much. I'll let you do this, but Alan.
I thank you very much, Chip. Um, the, the figures that have been presented in the pack are not this three final, because we're going through the year end and uh, we have to check all the invoices are there. But overall, from the income side, um, I don't think there's going to be significant change, so we are going to be down ten thousand pounds. Uh, that's really, I think due to uh, section one oh six money that we budgeted to come in that hasn't come in. From an expenditure perspective, there are, there, there are a number of um, variances. I think if you look at the total under spend of nine thousand four hundred and seventy five, uh, which is the total variance uh, against budgets. Uh, there's three things that we have to take into account. The first one is, is that we had some tree works that we knew, which should have been booked in last year, which were, so we, we wired that money and that needs to be brought back. So that will reduce that deficit down by two thousand, uh, approximately two thousand four hundred. We also, as a full council, agreed that we would fund the Christmas lights repair, uh, repairs, even though there was no budgets. So that's, that looks like it'll be about six thousand pounds. And then the last thing that we did is we also agreed that we would fund the excess expenditure on pay parks from uh, reserves, because again, we hadn't budgeted for that, and it was a health and safety issue that we do that. So if you add up those variances, the other nine thousand, we're going to get two thousand back from, from reserves, six thousand back theoretically from the general reserve. And uh, uh, five thousand back from the uh, pay park reserve. So overall, the budget will balance out, and that will be presented at the next amenities uh, uh, meeting, where the final figures will hopefully the figures will be, will be finalized. From a council overall perspective, we always knew that amenities would, would exceed its budget. We knew that going back a few months ago. So we're still confident from an overall council perspective that the budget, the overall budget will be achieved. It's just that some, some uh, committees have exceeded, you know, exceeded positive, exceeded their budget positively, and some have exceeded negatively.
Okay. Any questions on finance? So we'll see the final version uh, next month, but there's not any particular shops. There is three things that Alan mentioned, we've all voted upon and approved, so uh, we knew we were going to uh, fix some of those sort of longstanding issues. Uh, the only thing I was going to mention on financial report. Um, we know now that we've had uh, five thousand pounds approved by Brekland MTI money for enhanced floral displays. What we don't have from Nick is uh, updated uh, quotes to do some of that work. Um, but I would quite like us at this meeting to agree, um, our share, if you like, so we know what budget we're working to. Um, and it would make sense for us to match what Brekland are offering. We know it's going to cost more than ten thousand pounds, but I suggest ten thousand pounds is quite a good amount to be investing, and I wouldn't want to go to more than that. We might have to scale back some of our plans to, to deliver that. But essentially what I'm saying is, um, uh, asking if we're content to allocate uh, five thousand pounds towards that. Um, presumably Alan, we'd need a sort of proposer and a seconder for that. Um, or would you just like us to note that we're happy?
I think what you should just put as a, as an item presentation is budget, the best talking about, put it on when we produced the first financial report.
Yeah.
Let's put that as an item under that, under the financial report, and I won't make a detriment of that.
Yeah, okay. Um, uh, the, the only reason I wanted to bring it up today was, uh, we're already in April. And what I don't want is for Nick to then have to wait until May to start buying plants and stuff. Because, you know, it was the months are running away with us. Um, if he's got a contractor that, you know, next week when he's here, that he's happy to go with. Um, you know, I'm happy for us to get on with it, frankly, because we want to get the plants in the ground, ready for the jubilee, frankly. Um, are we able to do that? Yeah. Okay. Do you want us to, to vote on that, or are you just gonna?
Uh, we, we will, we'll have sufficient budget to, so we're not asking. I would, I'd hate the committee to do anything illegal.
Uh, uh, I will push to get this done. You just tell me if you're doing it properly. Okay, good. So, uh, moving on. Uh, item eight five five, approval of small grants. We've had uh, one small grant application which has been distributed to members. Uh, anything to add on what was circulated there, Alan?
Uh, that.
So the applicant is, uh, involve, uh, Razim C I C, uh, Polish school. Uh, members received their paperwork and the compliance report and happy. Da, da, da. And they essentially want to buy sixty books to support the children with uh, learning. If nobody's got any questions, I'll ask for a proposer. And a seconder. Carla, thank you very much. All in favour? Agreed. Thank you very much. And the only other thing to do on small grants was a uh, request to alter uh, a grant, which again was circulated. Do you want to say anything to that one, Alan?
That's just that the um, government ministry's judge of the screen who, who made the application. Uh, things have, it took them quite a while to get through the last bit of information. I think things had moved on. And they're just saying that they would rather use part of that grant uh, to, to skin up the, the volunteers on heavy handling or manual handling, rather than, you know, foregoing it, because they don't need the permits anymore. Or the carrier's licence, sorry.
Members content with that? Yep.
That'd be cool, didn't you?
Yeah, sort of approved a variance. No to propose.
Thank you. Second please. Thank you, Carla. Okay, thank you.
Just checking in my notes, uh, about the uh, front garden competition, the next one. Now, moving on to eight five six, update on the front garden competition. Uh, at the moment, uh, I'm not aware that we've had anybody uh, come forward to offer to be a sponsor for the different categories. So that's obviously the immediate priority is to find uh, companies willing to sponsor. And it's a hundred pounds a year for three years. Uh, so it is important that we find the um, sponsors. But what I was really hoping for was an update on the promotion of um, the fact that we are now running the front garden competition. I haven't seen anything in terms of sort of publicity to promote the fact that we're now doing it. So how do we make that work? Because I think we agreed that we'd promote it, so April, May time. I'm just having a, trying to remind myself. The competition will be open from the first of May each year to the thirtieth of June. So really, we want some publicity going out April. I think the agreement was, um, Tom and um, David would do some sort of poster and get that circulated. So if we can make sure that happens, and then we'll try and get confirmation for the May meeting. And one of the things I thought would be good to try would be to write to some of the uh, big companies that we use as a council. So, you know, CGM, um, trying to think who else we use, ID Verdi. Is that something you could do? Uh, Alan, write to them. I mean, it's three hundred pounds over three years. It's not a huge amount of money, and we only need four sponsors, so. Uh, getting some from them people would be quite useful. Okay. Anyone got any other comments on front gardens? No. Moving on to eight five seven, management of the priory to consider the current implications of the managed property agreement, MPA on current staffing levels at the expense of other tasks within amenities. Uh, this was discussed at full council, and the decision required is to forward these considerations to the finance committee as part of the contractual review. Uh, Stuart, do you want to give us a bit of an overview on this one?
Yeah, I think most of you were there at full council. I just filled people in about the idea. Um, situation at the moment, we have six thousand a year to open and shut the priory and litter pick, a minimum amount of litter picking. Uh, and that's about it, um, which we in the past have taken, taken on quite a while back now. The price hasn't changed. We found more recently that uh, by our contractors that we're using are probably not geared up to the best people to uh, challenge, um, people who are in the priory or antisocial behaviour that's happening in the priory. So that's obviously during the, the opening hours. Um, but there's also an issue that people are getting in there after hours, causing damage and, you know, um, backdoosance to themselves. Um, which, fortunate Stuart Wilson in Abbey House keeps an eye on that and reports to the police, but the police are very rarely attend immediately, because obviously they've got other things to, to do. Uh, and so Mike and I met with a representative from English Heritage, um, a few weeks back, and just talked through uh, what we want as a community from the opening and shutting. Um, we're conscious that there is not a massive amount of money out there, but at the same time, the site deserves better. And um, what we felt was that the opening and shutting that we're doing at the moment is not sufficient. We, there needed to be a bit more of a security presence, um, and a bit of out of hours blitz, you know, visiting uh, to challenge people, make people aware that, that it is manned, you will get caught if you're causing um, things there. And the right people being able to challenge those who may threaten um, the untrained staff who are going at the moment to, to lock up. The feedback we got then from English Heritage was an email to Tina to say that the contract, it's up to you. If you want to terminate it, then English Heritage will have to put other measures in place to, to deal with it. Um, obviously full council, we said, well, this, what's discussed is amenities, which is what we're doing today. Um, so I, I think the idea is, you know, choices are, we carry on as we are, which I don't think is satisfactory from anybody's, I mean, we go back with a revised um, level of service, which will be an increased cost and see if English Heritage will play ball, uh, uh, and give us that. Or we get English Heritage to sort out whatever they're going to do in terms of the security, opening and locking up separate from the town council. Um, you know, in the past, we've looked at the idea of by opening and shutting, we could subsidize the opening, shutting the cemetery and the toilets and all that. But that was when we, we had direct staff involved. We're now in, in a contract situation, so it's not as relevant as it was, um, a few years back. So, yeah, I'm open to offers, but I think the priory deserves better. Uh, and we're going to try and aim to get the best solution we can for that.
Okay, thank you very much. Has anyone got any immediate points that they want to make? Chris?
I think conservatively, when I heard about this, was the health and safety of the town council staff. When I've heard about, you know, one of our young members has started to go down there. Have to deal with, because they're not trained to deal with security issues, they're not trained to deal with conflict, et cetera, et cetera. They shouldn't be put in that position. We really need proper professional security people to deal with this. And if English Heritage want to pay it, then I think just give it back to them.
Yeah, just check on that. So at the moment, the contractors open and close and they do a site inspection. But the contractors, if there is an issue, will call our staff, and that's why our staff have got involved? Or do we do spot checks or routine visits?
I don't believe we're doing too much supervision of the contractors. Um, if it's an answer house issue, I know our staff have been involved because the contractor hasn't locked up. And so Stuart's from the town council, so the contractor has knocked up.
Yeah.
Um, contractors number two, to chase them. So that's when the likes of Nick and the team will go down and lock up.
I just wanted to be clear on what our staff's role was, because, um, you know, the opening and closing is done by a contractor. Um, but because we're essentially the middleman and we, the contract is with us. If they don't do, you know, what we're paying them to, ultimately we're picking up. Okay, that's, I just wanted to clarify that, because there, there is a, there's a, there's two, there's two risks. There's a risk to the contractor. Um, and then there's a risk to our staff as well. Uh, Mike, please.
We, well, as Stuart said, that was very well expressed, I think the uh, whoever, whoever looks after the priory, whether it be ourselves or in heritage. Um, the, the biggest issue now is the issue of vandalism.
Yeah.
Uh, and it does appear to be getting worse. Um, Stuart Wilson providing pictures just recently to Stuart's right and eye and maybe others, um, of adult males, not, not, not lads, adult males climbing around on top of the buildings. And uh, it's very unreasonable to expect our staff or any people contracted to shut the gates, to lock the gates to challenge those people, especially if there's a group of them, as, as it usually is, it's red, red, CSO, true vandal. Um, so I, I think we need to decide whether we want to be looking at whether we employ a security firm or whether we should hand the whole business back to um, English Heritage. And I hope that they have got wider experience across the country dealing with these sort of problems, and maybe therefore have a security firm that they use, they can simply bring into a new site. That might be the best way forward.
Can I just check, Stuart? Why, why is it locked and unlocked? You know, why do we open and close it? Because you can very easily get in. I mean, my point is, we, we're spending six thousand pounds paying a company to open and close it. Would we, it's not our money, we get given that money, but we ultimately pay a contractor to do that. Would we not be better off paying six grand to a security company that deals with the security issues and not worrying about the opening and closing? I'm, I'm just, you know, asking the question.
Yeah, I think the idea, and this is something we touched upon, Mike, when we were there, but do you have open access all the, all the time through? Or one of the things was, the bottom monks gave us a gateway there. Would you open that and allow food, you know, people to walk through? Hopefully then giving extra sets of eyes to deter the antisocial behaviour. History has told us that antisocial behaviour tends to happen either during school holidays or after hours, because it's, as you say, you can get in there. There is a weak area which we've been on to them about for many years, about trying to address that, the, the a little wall at the front, at the front gate set. So we, we know that there's lots of nooks and crannies that they get into and drink, smoke, shoot up, or whatever it is. So there will be things that happen there. So if we let it open, there is the fear that more of that will happen. Uh, you, you, by locking the gates, you do deter a few people going in there, uh, and creating that. The, the damage issue, you know, you can soon eat into six thousand pounds worth of damage. You know, one would hope that English Heritage would want to do something that nips it in the bud. So you, you're saving your money by throwing a little bit more at security, you then
Saving yourself on maintenance in, in future.
But uh, I think they would be open to having it open uh, all the while. I think the residents would be resistant to having that, knowing that the antisocial behaviour, not Stuart in particular, but obviously residents don't don't skate that. Don't want to navigate. Um, we back onto it, are very concerned about people doing the things in there, uh, and what happens. And they're very protective of it, and it's, it's nice to see that they are concerned about it. So I don't think we would want to go that open access route. Um, so I think that, you know, we, we do need to have something to, to open and shut the gates. Um, uh, I know in terms of a security firm, Tina has put English Heritage on to a local firm who would be willing to take it on, and it was an effort base. Um, and hopefully would be a little bit more than actually attuned to local requirements than if you had a national security company who, you know, based Norwich or elsewhere, who just, you know. And that, whereas if they've got a little bit more pride in the local area, it might do that little bit extra for you, rather than a, a national firm.
Yeah, okay. Alan?
I think the other thing, just from a, from a resource perspective, is that if something does go wrong, for example, we have to send staff in to, if the rocks, if people you know, move rocks around, we have to go gather them up. We've had situations where English Heritage's own contractors may have left the, the locks unscrambled. So the kids have come by, locked up, locked people in, so we get a frantic phone call. So the kids have come by, locked up, locked people in. So we get a frantic phone call, we have to go, go and deal with it. Uh, um, so there, there are those issues. And if there is damage, we sometimes have to leave, you know, Nick has to go and do the police report, report it in through the online system. Uh, and then there's a lot more meetings with English Heritage. And I think that was the, the point that from a, from a kind of senior management team's perspective, that there is that input, which we're not costing yet. It's not just a matter of people going back to enclosing. If there are some issues, we have to deal with it as a council to go and sort those, those, uh, issues out and and, and get the finalized theirs with, uh, English Heritage to ensure that, that, you know, provide them with the assurance that steps have been taken.
Okay, just got to throw my account to the ring. I think we, we haven't got the appetizer council to do all that's required. Uh, A, resources and B, the, the money that would need to subsidise those resources that we would have to throw at it. So I think the time is probably now right to say, well, English Heritage, you know, you've got to deal with this, your property. Um, if it's trial, a security firm going in and doing the same job, and also adding a little bit more of spot checks and blitzing, um, going in there, you know, for fortnight during school holidays and so to, to give that deterrence from there. So I, I, that's my view that we ought to say, well, let's give it a go with the security companies. Quite clearly what we've got at the moment is not satisfactory.
So just thinking about that on a practical basis, so we would continue to take the six grand and employ the people that open and close, and they would have a new contract with a security firm direct? Or are we saying, actually, now you take over the whole responsibility for the opening and closing?
We lose six, um, and that's, you know, they use that towards the cost of the security aspect that they do.
Carla?
Gonna ask, would be, um, possible to consider that it might be more useful for the sake of saving money and having more security to target the opening times or the opening, uh, times of the year in other seasons? Um, if it's a school holidays, I'm more of a problem. Try to open in a, in a reduced manner at that time of the year. Cause usually people they visit will visit all year round. Um, and just put more security, put more supervision on those specific times. So, so you can, you can, you can go with the flow and adjust the cost of supervising it accordingly. Just a suggestion.
Yeah, it's not that child. Actually, you know, it's a bit more bespoke to when they're needed, so.
Yeah, and, and this way you can target the security and, and budget for that on the times that you find that is more needed. Um, and maybe just find a schedule though, for opening and closing that suits more visitors or more of the town itself, what town more needs. Suggestion.
Um, again, I'm just asking lots of questions here because I don't know the answers. Um, asking more questions. Um, the six grand that we have, uh, from English Heritage to provide this goes into the, the, the contract with the same firm that does the opening and closing of the toilets, is that right? So if we lose the six grand from English Heritage, are we committed to still pay six grand in that contract? I mean, what's the sort of contractual obligations for us getting out of that?
I think we have to have a discussion with the, uh, contractor. I mean, we didn't, we didn't get, you know, they gave us one price.
For the whole lot.
All the tasks.
Yeah.
You know, um, so.
When's that scheduled to end? Do we have a review of that?
The contract's under review at the moment, um, but we did, it was a three-year contract.
It is another previous opportunity there to look at, uh, a more, more detail to the times and needs, the space and the area needs more attention than once. And you can, they can come down on that a little bit and perhaps try, try to work out when the skill is most needed and, you know, arrange accordingly.
My view is, if our contract is to open and shut the gates and that's it, that is what we do. And anything extra would be down to English Heritage to have additional security. And if we did get involved in it, we say to English Heritage, well, actually, if we end up getting involved in other things, this is our hourly rate for call out for staff and pay them, you know, they, you know, invoice them for extra hours.
I, I, I agree, but if we are basing for the opening and shutting, then it's worth to work with English Heritage and, and the contract itself to find those times and rearrange, rethink the times of the year and the days, all of the times that space is open or closing to prevent antisocial behaviour. That's where I'm coming from, any mistakes?
Yes, I mean, if you do have open and shutting times, at least if people are there out of hours, you know, you've got the authority then to say, or a security firm have the authority to say, you shouldn't be here at this time. You know, because if it's, if it's left open all the time, you know, they could say, well, we're entitled to be here. It's no shutting hours.
So effectively, Stuart, what we're saying is we want to go back to English Heritage and say, um, we don't want to take the money anymore and be in the middle. We want you to be responsible for the opening and closing and the security.
I think that would be my preferred, I'm taking on board Carla's route, yeah, you know, if we look to, to tame it. I can still do that, like getting the local security cap. These have been the hotspots. We've got evidence, you know, Stuart Wilson's done a great job of finding the evidence and you can say, well, these, when things happen. Um, if you can ta- target those times, because I think if we kept it in-house, I don't think we've got the management and supervision capacity to do a lot of the stuff that would be required.
My, my nervousness is, um, we could end up in an even worse position. Because, uh, I mean, we're sort of really sort of, um, uh, saying to English Heritage, we want you to take on, but they could very well say, actually, we're not going to do anything. We're not going to open and close it. We're not going to do any security.
Well, the conversation mine and I had with the lady, it was indicative that they would
Okay.
Be doing that. But you, I think we see this as a trial period, because I think if, if you're half to twelve months, this is not working. I think you can go back to it.
Well, with that caveat, I'd be a bit more happy. I mean, it's not our responsibility in the sense of it's not our land. And, you know, obviously we're mindful of antisocial behaviour and the damage to the historical asset as such. Um, but it is a significant site within Fethford and at least with this current arrangement, we have a degree of control over what happens in our town. So, um, but, you know, ultimately they're going to have to pay more. Um, that's what it comes down to. Carla?
Find, find balance between getting them to take over things. So the management is still provide them with a friendly face of the local insight of, and the data that we have about the damage that's been caused so far. Just so they can work with somebody that knows what's going on with the town and what the town requires. Still handle them the package, basically. I think it's finding that balance and see if that works. And giving them the responsibility, but same time work with them when what suits best the town, because it is our monument and it is the town's interest.
And I, I think, yeah, just following on from that for May, the, the conversation Mike and I had with the lady was that it was not, oh, we're going to walk away from it. It was very much that, you know, we'll keep the dialogue going. Um, the idea of utilising the priory as a site for heritage events, uh, and doing things like that, working with, um, other funds such as the House to try and do more down there. Um, they still want to work with the town council. So even if we did go to secure, I think twelve months down the line, the security aspects are working. And I think we should have another conversation and say, well, you know, for double that man, we can do a better job and, you know, take it on. But I think this, this trial.
It's worth trying.
Yeah. Um, the, uh, decision that we have to come to is basically to uh, submit our views to finance, who will review the contractual side of it. And particularly the, the point about, you know, to what extent we're tied into our existing, uh, contractor. Um, is the suggestion there from Stuart, the sort of, uh, shared view of the committee, that we effectively say that we want English Heritage to be responsible for the lot? Yep, cool. So you can.
That we call this, this to end our contract and pass over to English Heritage to provide opening, closing and security.
Yeah. Yeah, um, rather than saying to end the contract, um, end our responsibility.
Thank you.
Because we might not.
It's like transfer and liability, I think, like.
On a personal level, I, I would still like to see, you know, as we go past and, and, and report back to the council, actually, you know, is it working? You know, how many incidents increasing and, you know, do they still shut it? So.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah.
Are you happy with that, Chris?
Can I get the proposal in a second, please? Stuart and Carla, thank you.
Okay.
I think it goes to finance.
Yeah. And just for completeness, all those content with that proposal, yeah? Super. Uh, moving on to eight, five, eight, consider an event application on Easter morning. Uh, to consider an application to hold an event on Castle Park on Easter morning. Alan?
It's very easy to deal with. The applicant has, was sent the open space policy and immediately withdrew their application.
Wasn't for an Easter egg hunt, was it? We just ruined that.
I think the intention was good, but I, I just think the risk associated with doing a public event like that, that I don't think they were aware of. That you've got to, you know, that thinks of public liability insurance and you've got to be very careful of that site. Because you can't go, you know, bury your, your Easter eggs, whatever they do with it, uh, uh, because of the implications.
Okay, noted. Uh, moving on to eight, five, nine, any complaints or compliments? To note any complaints or compliments received? No, everyone happy? Anyone?
No news is going, good news.
True. Correspondence, to note and discuss any correspondence received, any? No.
No.
No. Uh, eight, six, one, committee officers, updates, to update any information since the agenda was released?
This is one item. Um, if, if you're aware, this committee approved the Wheels on the Field event. Uh, we were tasked to go back and give that agreement in principle, but just chased up and getting all the paperwork. We have been doing that. We finally managed to make contact yesterday. Uh, and we just have kind of confirmed to them that it's up to, you know, their responsibility to get the event licence from Breckland and to provide the policies that we had actually requested when we had done the initial review. So just to update the committee that that's where we are on that particular application.
Okay. Uh, community engagement to discuss and agree any consultation or media release required?
We do front garden.
Yeah, well, actually, yeah, that does come under that. The, the, the poster for the front garden competition, that could come under community engagement. And the only other thing I would mention under community engagement is, uh, we gave a small grant uh, a couple of months ago now to the Barnum Action Group, the residents group for the Barnum Cross Estate to support the litter pick. Um, uh, we have a litter pick on Saturday at Barnum Cross and the chair of the residents group, Tim Lovejoy, um, will be receiving a cheque from the mayor. Uh, so the committee are very welcome to come along, uh, ten till twelve on Saturday. When I say receiving a cheque, they've already had the money. So it's, it's kind of like a fake cheque. Um, but, uh, we will have it with a photo and, um, send you the photo and you can do what you want with it. Um, but, uh, yeah, the mayor's doing that on, uh, Saturday. Okay, and the only other agenda item is the one that I skipped over earlier, which was action points and updates. I just need to go back, oh, find that. And I'm not going to go through all of these because, uh, we don't need to, but there were a couple that were more time critical than others. So you've all got this in your packs. So if there's any that you particularly want an update on, please do, uh, shout. But, uh, for now, uh, don't need to do number one, we don't need to do number two, because Stephen's updated us on the grazing. Number three, we know Nick's already done, he's done, um. Actually, I think probably number four, to obtain a quotation for enhancing the Thomas Paine inscription panels. That can probably come off now, I should think, because we've got the quotes, yeah. Um, the one I was going to ask on is, um, the BDC Breckland Council mowing, and I know, Alan, you've added there, presented Breckland Council on the tenth of March, awaiting a decision. Are we still awaiting a decision on that?
I followed up, uh, either Monday or Friday last week and we were still waiting for that decision.
Okay, because I noticed they are out, um, mowing this week. Um, I suspect whatever changes to the mowing regime we've adopted as a committee probably won't be brought in until next year's mowing regime. But as long as we can show that we are trying to implement that with Breckland, I think that's important. Uh, da, 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 dun, dun, dun. Uh, and I see you've added, um, the inventory of street furniture to be completed by the end of August, which is good. Bin's on there.
The enlargement's probably also come off.
Which one?
The engagements with Breckland on bin enlargements.
Oh, yes, yeah, yeah, we can take that one off the, uh.
The bin engagements, enlargements, sorry, bin enlargements.
Uh, the second from bottom, to report back on the engagements with Breckland on the bin engagements and enlargements. Uh, on the bins, that, that's all been taken care of, so we can take that one off. Um, and the only other one was the heritage trail, because, uh, Nick's told us that all of the roundalls are now in. Uh, physical assets are in place as reported by Nick and town team, trail and marketing work to be delivered by HTT Equi, is that the Heritage and Town Events Committee?
Yes.
Has that been discussed by them at all?
No, meeting tomorrow.
Oh, okay. So you can raise that?
When I spoke to David, he was indicating that that was going to go across to them and Katie leaving one.
Yeah.
That is to be discussed tomorrow.
Great, because, um, as we've said before, we've spent about a thousand pounds upgrading the trail. So let's, you know, let's get it all relaunched now we've got the roundalls in. Uh, any other comments or questions from any of the actions? People are quite happy with them. Brilliant. So. Meeting closed. Thank you all very much for attending. Thank you.